Okay, Board members. We have seven. We can begin so we can start our day on time. So Board members will please come to the table. All right. The first item on our agenda this morning is an update on Justice High School fundraising efforts and our decision point is going forward with our wonderful volunteers from the community would like to continue to do some more fundraising and the school board needs to weigh in on some of those points. So that is our decision point on fundraising going forward. Okay. Dr. Lockhart, you have a brief-
Madam Chair.
Yes?
As a procedural matter, could I ask what you are looking for, what we should be looking to achieve by the end of-
Looking to achieve is, you will see in the presentation, the wonderful volunteers have planned a day of giving in June. They are considering doing more traditional types of fundraising where you make phone calls to corporate sponsors who would then perhaps have deeper pockets. And the staff, central school staff would like to end their part of this in September. But the question then is the school, the volunteers can continue to raise money for their needs, but it is going forward with the type of fundraising. The superintendent, if we authorize the committee to actually try to get some corporate money, the superintendent is willing to say this is good-
So Mrs. Strauss, whether this is just for the information or are we making any decision today?
We need to make some decisions so that we can, yes, decide where we're going with the fundraising.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Just for clarity then, the Board will be discussing and voting whether or not to approve the superintendent's recommendation, which superintendent has given us a recommendation.
Yes.
So that will be the focus of our conversation.
That's right. Yes, it will be. And we have 45 minutes set aside, so we are moving forward. And all right, we will go ahead. We have a brief presentation and an update.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, school board members. We are going to be coming to that piece that was just discussed by Ms. Strauss. We also have a little bit of information. As promised, we were going to come in June, actually, per the implementation timeline to give you an update. So we'll do a very brief update on where things are and then we'll have some discussion around the fundraising piece. I'd like to thank Dr. Fabio Zuluaga, Region Assistant Superintendent for Region Two, and his support here. He's been doing a lot of work with Penny Gross, the principal, who's also here with us today, and other staff, as well as our community committee that's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to support all pieces of the implementation plan as we move forward with Justice High School. This one. Okay. Just as a refresher, back in December, we brought to the Board a presentation on the implementation for the new name. We went back as we've been going and sort of checking through. You can see a lot of work has been happening, a lot of work has been completed, but a lot of work is still in progress. And I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but I just wanted to give you a sense that the implementation plan that we did bring you in December, we have been following. We have had a ton of work happening, both centrally as well as at the school level, to support all the things that we laid out in that implementation plan to support the implementation of Justice High School. In addition, some highlights, early in January, per the chart I just shared with you, the students, led by Principal Gross, chose a new mascot, the Wolves has the new mascot. And we also had some support from a marketing firm that donated their service and time to the school for the design and logo. Again, I'm not going to dive too far into the weeds of this. I just want to give you a few highlights and a sense of some of the work that's been happening. Doctor Zuluaga.
I know. Thank you, Dr. Lockhart. Good morning, members of the Board. Just want to just add a couple of comments that, and I want to send big kudos to Principal Gross for her involvement and passion with all of this. As Dr. Lockhart said, more than 1,000 students were involved. We were also able to involve our kid from Glasgow Middle. And also, a special thanks to a member of the community, Mrs. Allison Olson, Dr. Lockhart, a member of the digital marketing, who donated a lot of the professional work for this. Thanks.
Thank you, Doctor Zuluaga. Some of the additional work that's been happening in terms of the ordering of uniforms, Mr. Curran, the DSA at the school, Principal Gross, all have been working to secure those orders. We updated the Board in, I believe it was February, with the RFP and what was happening there. And so that is well underway. Again, that's another piece of that implementation plan that we shared in December, that I just shared again in the first slide of items that we're working through. In addition, there are many facility pieces that have been in the works. Many of these will not actually start to happen until school lets out this June, but there's a lot of planning and consideration under the way. Mr. Plattenberg has been helping to lead that work. And just a few of examples, again, from that implementation plan, as far as the marquees and the fields and the gym floor, et cetera, all under consideration. All the work has begun in terms of preparation so that we can have that ready for when students return in the fall. Also, as part of the implementation plan, a rededication ceremony, I believe we're shooting for early September. That date is not firmed completely, but there are plans. A committee has been formed to include students and parent representatives. We had discussed the, in the implementation plan, recognizing and honoring Justice Thurgood Marshall, Louis Mendez Jr., and Barbara Rose Johns as a part of the renaming and rededication. And we are working to get that date completely firm and as soon as possible get that out to not just the Board, obviously, but all members of our school community. But plans are well underway there. As it relates to donations, we had established, as you saw in the summary and background key points for this presentation, we had created a portal on our FCPS website where funds could be donated. We will get to in just a little bit, the work of the committee for Justice High School that's been advocating and supporting those fundraising efforts. Very appreciative. But you can see the totals to date, $76,247. That portal stays open. We anticipate we will keep that portal open until such time as either we reach our fundraising goals or we feel like we've gotten to the place where we've exhausted all of our fundraising efforts. And so we don't see that coming down anytime soon. It still remains a mechanism. And again, the purpose of those funds is to repay the flexibility reserve as described in the implementation plan. Ms. Burden, did you want to say anything about our budget so far for FY18?
Good morning. Basically, this chart just shows the total amount of the fiscal '18 Justice High School budget out of the flexibility reserve of $283,191. You have a listing of what the budget is to cover. It's mostly athletics at $115,000, performing arts at about $55,000, and then capital costs of $51,000, and then some miscellaneous items like concession stand banners and things like that. So far, we've obligated about $150,000, which means there are existing purchase orders for those items. We've expended $3,700 and we have anticipated obligations of about $130,000, which totals the budget of $283. Again, as Dr. Lockhart said, the current donations total $76,247, leaving about $207,000 to be covered from the flexibility reserve in fiscal '18. You should also know that in fiscal '19, the budget totals $170,671, and that also is to be funded from the fiscal '19 flexibility reserve, although we hope to be able to dedicate $10,000 in gate receipts as a revenue against that.
Thank you, Ms. Burden. We also are encouraged, as we take certain things to bid, as we revise and look at our estimates, we do believe we will realize some savings as well to our bottom line. Okay. As I mentioned earlier, the Committee for Justice High School, a group of dedicated volunteers from the community, has been incredibly supportive and helpful in our overall transition plans for Justice High School. They've been not only helping to raise funds, but also awareness and supporting the efforts thus far in this transition to the new name Justice High School. Some of those folks are with us here today. Terms of the work that's been happening, community-based fundraising, I know that there have been several events through the Committee for Justice High School that have, you can see some of the spikes in the slide I showed you as it related to fundraising by months. And you could probably guess where some of those events were held. It's been very helpful in our efforts. We know that there's a day of giving planned coming up in June, another event to support funds for Justice High School. I was under the impression that there was possibly some grant funding to pursue. I don't have the details on that. I'm also hearing that might not be exactly what the committee was intending to do, so I'll look for some clarification on that. We certainly know that there could be opportunities for grant funding to support some of the efforts that are happening, but I don't want to speak for the committee. And the establishment of an advisory board, which was a conversation that I believe we can have a little bit later in the process here, to support, again, to support fundraising efforts. So at this point, what I'd like to do is shift the conversation back over to Chairman Strauss in terms of the question that you posed about the level of support the Board wishes to provide. First, let me say that we are very appreciative of any funds that have been raised to support this work. We said at the beginning, we'd look to community donations to help offset these costs. And so, as I said, we're committed to keeping that portal open, continuing the work. I think I'm looking to the Board for some direction about exactly how we would do that. And I also would turn to Dr. Braybrand in terms of his recommendation as superintendent for the Board for consideration. So, Dr. Braybrand, if you'd like to speak to that recommendation, we could do that.
Well, good morning, everybody. I appreciate folks from the community also coming out this morning on this very important I know when I came here that this issue about the renaming of a school was a huge, huge discussion for the school board. There had been about two years of spending time around this issue, and it was time to make a decision. When I arrived, we moved forward and followed through on a process to do the renaming. We brought, I brought you a list of names, and a decision was made to both rename and then to name the school Justice High School. Then, as part of that renaming, there was the focus on, there was the focus on attempting to- Yeah, maybe we'll find.
You're okay?
Yes. I don't-
It's so strong.
Yeah, let's try that. As a focus of the renaming, to do fundraising and to get some dollars from our community through private fundraising. What I recommend is shared right on the prior slide. I think supporting the community who has worked hard to want to do this fundraising, that a letter of support signed by me as superintendent will help give the community the necessary support to continue the fundraising. And I am proud of the fundraising that has been done. $75,000 over the last several months is a good, good beginning. I also think, as humble as I can say this to you, that it is time to begin to transition the work for this school and the excitement of a new Justice High School back to the school leadership and to the community itself. And for the Board, the Board has had a role in this matter. It needed to have a role in this matter. It made a decision. And now, a school that has been part of the Board discussion for really now three years needs to, almost like a beautiful fish, needs to be released back out of the fishbowl and back into the ocean to be one of all of our successful schools in Fairfax County. So the date of September 30th of the transition would simply mean that our division-wide time and resources around this matter would go back to the school and school leadership. Every school does, with a set of different groups, fundraising around needs that support its school right now in Fairfax. And there are various groups, and they have various fundraising efforts. I don't think it is in the best interest of the school system, of the Board, of this superintendent, to continue to have that work managed out of the central office, but better to have it happen at the school and in the community where folks are closest to the issues at hand. So what I'm recommending today is a letter that would go out from me with support for the continued fundraising and an agreement that by the end of September, that the division work around supporting the fundraising would fully transition. And we're doing it together right now. We're doing it hand and glove with the school and the central office. But that those roles would now fully go to the school to continue fundraising. As Dr. Lockhart said, till we reach our fundraising goal or we determine through, the school determines through group, through its mutual work with the community, that they raise as much as they can to support the costs associated with the renaming of the school. So that's my recommendation, and I look forward to the Board discussion.
Thank you again. So our decision point today is simply on the fundraising efforts. And going forward, that is the topic of discussion, and the superintendent's plan is simply focused on fundraising, nothing else at this point. So I have Ms. Evans, Ms. Hines, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Kiesgahmeyer, and Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank all of you for all the work that you've done on this. I know considerable effort has gone into, as well as Principal Gross, who's done an amazing job at the school level, particularly with the mascot. I wanted to ask the two members of the Committee for Justice High School to stand up, Debbie Ratliff and George Waters. Thank you very much. Not just for being here today, but for all of your work and exceptional efforts here. I had a couple of things to say about the specifics. One, I too have been educated about the issue of grants. The committee, committee members are telling me that what they were looking for is corporate donations, which is separate from grants. So just to clarify that, that what they are hoping to pursue are corporate donations. Grants, I gather, are another animal. So that, just to clarify what they have in mind. As far as the date, I do have concerns about setting a cutoff date. The committee members have been looking to us for support in their efforts, and I think it will be important today for us to be clear that we do support their efforts. I think there's a letter that has been drafted for Dr. Braybrand's signature, correct, that would say we support these efforts so that they could use that however they want, as opposed to us sending it out. Is that the idea, Dr. Braybrand?
Yes.
All right. And I think that would go a long way. You can see that there were significant efforts in January and February, and then things kind of petered off a little bit. And I think some of this was, as we were talking through how the school system could support the efforts. So I think now is a good time for us as a Board to show our support as a Board for these efforts and to approve having either Dr. Braybrand or Dr. Braybrand and Mrs. Strauss sign a letter. I don't know that I feel strongly one way or the other myself about it being one or both. I gather your suggestion is for just Dr. Braybrand to sign the letter. As far as the date, however, because they now are going to be moving forward, you know, with great vigor, not just for a day of giving, but then going after corporate donations, I think they're going to need more time. So I think September 30 is too soon for us to put a stop to what we're doing at the central office level. I would suggest we perhaps give another six months and say, let's regroup at six months and see where we are. And just then, all we're talking about is fundraising over the summer, which I think might be a little bit more difficult. So I wouldn't set it at September 30. I had not seen this date until it was posted. And I'm not sure why that was chosen, perhaps just to have an end date, but I would suggest rethinking this in six months' time to see where we are and how much they have gotten, and then think about that. At the school level, when you talk about transitioning to the school level, who then are we talking about? Who are we talking about taking it over?
So if I may try to address that, we would envision it working just like any other fundraising effort that happens in our schools. The committee itself can continue that work, and we hope that they would. All of our schools utilize, you know, fundraising efforts through their PTSAs, through boosters, an arm of the principal's efforts, however it might best serve or best fit, moving forward. As Dr. Braybrand mentioned, we were just talking from a central perspective of-
Well, I would think we would need to have that conversation first before we decide to make a transition like that. At this point, we've got community members who are willing to spend their time and their considerable time and considerable efforts to do this. I would think we would want to give them the opportunity to do what they are trying to do and then come back. So that would be my advocacy to take out that September 30th date.
Chairman Strauss, just one clarification. The date is not a date to terminate the portal. The portal will remain up, and we would have the division-wide portal. The primary responsibility for the fundraising, the point of contact would move from the central administration to the school. We'd still be able to provide school support as necessary, but right now, I think we've got this hybrid piece, and I think it's our belief, it's my belief as superintendent, that the best place is to normalize it back into the regular fundraising culture of the school. And that's why I suggest the September 30th.
And I can see that once we get truly through the transition, but by September 30th, we won't be truly through the transition. So I would suggest a longer time for the committee to do its work with the support of central staff and-
We'll listen today, and we'll certainly work with you on whatever transition date that you think is acceptable.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hines?
Yeah, thank you. And so, this is great news, $75,000? That's amazing. Thank you so much to the community. I think it's wonderful. I, just a couple of things, and I hesitate to put them on the table just to take them off, but I'm worried that they're going to end up on the table. And one is, you know, whether, I've heard a question whether we want the community to be raising funds for this transition, and I feel like the train has left the station on that one. I mean, the Board pretty clearly said, yes, we would like the community to help, and we asked, we tasked the superintendent with helping the community help. So, and as we know, we have a general policy in the school system about fundraising for schools, that anybody in the community can raise money for any school within certain specific limits. I mean, we don't allow people to raise money for faculty members, for staff, you know, there's certain limits. But as long as groups are working within those limits, within our policy, then anyone can raise money for Stewart for this kind of work. And so I think, just in case anyone was thinking that we should make an exception to that policy for this situation and not allow fundraising for the Stewart name change, I think that would be inequitable and not a good idea because it's generally allowed. So I, again, I don't know if that's even going to be on somebody's mind today. I'm glad to hear that the portal will remain open because that continues to be support from central office for the people who want to do this work. My question's a little bit like Ms. Evans', and I'll be interested to hear what other people have to say, is, you know, how long it makes sense to have a specific central office staff assigned to this, you know, to help the school principal? I assume that in the ordinary course, if a school principal has a question or needs some support with a fundraising issue, that principal can come to central office to finance or to the RAS and get that support.
That is correct.
Okay. So the only other question that I still kind of have in mind is, do we have a draft of the proposed letter or a sense of the language of the letter?
Yes, we have a proposed draft, which I could share with you. There's been a lot of drafts of things that have gone around. Part of my recommendation honestly is, I believe that that letter needs to be coming from me and only from the superintendent. And I think, again, this is my judgment, you all will weigh in, I think it's best for the school division, for the school board, and for the justice community that the letter comes from me, and I will be sure that the final draft of what I would share would be something I'd give a advanced draft to the school board before I send it out.
Okay, thank you. I'm agnostic. If you recommend sending it yourself, that works for me, but I know the Board would like to see it before-
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Great. First, to the committee members who are here, I do want to express my appreciation. My husband, my family have been very much involved in fundraising over the years, getting Woodson High School field turfed, and it's incredible amount of time and effort. So I appreciate all of you who are trying to help bring in these much-valued funds. But I do want to share with the public what I shared with my colleagues, you know, numerous times, both at the work sessions and at the Board table. I am 100% in support of anyone in our community who wants to bring funding to our schools. And so, to the Committee for Justice High School, for however long you would like to be involved and raise funds for the school, that is deeply welcomed. But my concern was more about placing a burden on our community, in this case, the Justice High School community. I don't want our dedicated volunteers who are on the committee or anyone else who's in the community feeling like there's a dual pressure about how to meet the needs of Justice High School. Those of us who've been studying equity of opportunity among our schools know that even with our directors of student activities across our 25 high schools, we talk about the disparities in which schools have money for, you know, extra amenities at their high schools, whether it's through athletic boosters, coral boosters, band boosters, performing arts, you name it, there is wealth of funds in some schools and not so much in other schools. And so, when I think about layering on a dual pressure on Justice High School community, that there's this notion of, well, you've got a debt to repay on the renaming transition, and, you know, where is the money coming from? As long as it's not necessarily competing for the fundraising that we go out to our community within justice for all those booster groups I just told you about, then that becomes, in my mind, an extra financial pressure on the school. And we're trying to reduce, you know, the disparities of funding supports, especially when we look at our different booster groups. So that was my worry. So I guess, here's my message. Number one, I'm in support with Ms. Evans. This Board hasn't even reached- hasn't even reached, really, just beyond the six-month mark of when we made this decision. So I would think we would want to consider nothing sooner than, you know, the 12-month mark of when we made this decision, to then revisit as a board and say, how are we going to transition central administration supports back to the school? We might even say that we want to do that starting in the new calendar year of January 2019, because we made the decision in late October, but then there was the organization time. So I do think that there's that piece in that. Ms. Evans, I'm completely with you. I'm not about to throw people into the deep end of the ocean of fundraising and say, you know, thank you and good luck with that. But I will say that my key piece is this. As long as the Committee for Justice High School is enjoying and wants to be engaged in this fundraising work, I support it wholeheartedly. However, when they have said, you know what, this has been a lot of work, and we need to get back to our own lives and our other responsibilities, I've said to this board and the public, the school board and the school system covers the cost, and that's the end of that. Because this board believed this was the right thing to do, and we shouldn't be then putting the burden of the transition onto the community. And just even to be more specific on this point that I shared with Ms. Evans over the weekend, I don't want to communicate out to anyone, including and most especially the Justice High School community, that this board didn't believe in the importance of this change, and then provide the financial support to it. And I know that at the time there was a lot of community conversation that we didn't want to have other operational funds with high-need schools going to a name change versus all the other things that we want to provide to Justice High School, Learning High School. But the bottom line is, I think it's so important that we communicate out publicly, and not just to Justice High School, but communicate out to Fairfax County residents and anyone nationally who's watching. We made this decision. We believed that it was appropriate for the time to change the name. And we covered the cost, and we didn't throw it on to somebody else to have to pay for it. Because in the end, this was a decision that the board and the system has made. So that's why it was my advocacy that when enough the community says, we've done all that we can, that there be a very clear sense of, thank you very much for all you've done for us, and we got you covered. And there isn't this debt for years and years and years, which our turf field, athletic boosters, as many people know, can carry debt, I'm looking at Bill Kern, I mean, five to 10 years, that we have our high school boosters carrying massive hundreds of thousands of dollars of debt. And I don't want that on Justice High School, not for something like this. And then from the letter, I think, you know, Dr. Brabrant, I appreciate so much that you're wanting to, again, support this effort and the work. I think that a letter from you is wholly appropriate. And I appreciate Ms. Heinz saying, you know, it's always helpful to the board that we see something so we can be knowledgeable and informed. I hope I covered all of the points that we were supposed to ask.
Thank you. Yes, you did. Thank you very much. Ms. Keys-Gamarra?
First, I too want to thank our community members for their efforts and raising what I think is a significant amount of money when we may not have given as much clear support and guidance. I think they kind of took the lead. They decided this needed to happen, and they made it happen. And for that, I for one am grateful. Going forward, I do want to make sure we're not strapping anybody's hands and saying that they can't do this, or, you know, I'm not, while I hear a plan, I'm not hearing clear guidance as to how this mechanism at the local level would happen. And I am concerned, what I have been concerned about thus far is whether we have somebody who is, you know, an expert in fundraising that is actually helping with this effort. I understand that the committee members have had some experience with a particular type of fundraising. But with respect to this, if we really want to ensure the success of this process, then we need to make sure that we are providing the appropriate tools for that to happen. And so I'm concerned about what local leadership actually means. Is there a reporting system? Is there, well, is this weight going to be placed on the principal, which I'm, you know, she can certainly weigh in, but I'm kind of thinking that may not be what she wants to do. I think she might have some other stuff to do. So I'm just, I am concerned about what that means, and I'm concerned about going forward, providing clear support and guidance from those that have been successful in this arena in the past. With respect to the letter, I don't have a problem with it going from the superintendent. I will state at this arena that I certainly intend to assist this committee in any way that I can. If I can go to events, if I can, whatever I can do, I intend to do that. Because I do think that this is important, and I think that we need to clearly send a message to our community of Justice High School that we made this decision, and we intend to do everything we possibly can to make it a success.
Thank you. I have Ms. Schultz, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Palchak.
So I guess my first question is, is that if there's a draft letter, why it's not on board docs? Because I think that's the most transparent.
Honest, this was just frankly getting ready for the work session. We had a lot of pieces. The draft letter can be out very, very shortly. It's going to be very close to drafts that I think have gone around. I huddled with my team late this week, last week, in anticipation of this, and I made the decision that I believe that the letter needed to come from me and only from me. So I will get that draft letter out shortly.
Okay, so I do agree with you, and I appreciate that decision, because I think there needed to be a definitive decision, that it was, you know, from whom the letter would come. To whom is the letter addressed?
Right now, this would be a generic letter of support from my office. And I would show it to the board before it was released.
Okay. So a generic letter of support, to me, is far preferable than what's been happening behind the scenes up until now. I think that, I appreciate Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you know, offering her support to attend whatever it is. Just a couple of things. I think the to whom was very important. I think publicly posting it, to be transparent, is very important. I don't think at all, and I appreciate the levity that Ms. Keys-Gamarra added to it, I don't think at all this is the principal's job. I mean, I think we actually should make that abundantly clear. I don't think it has anything to do with the principal, you know, executing the administrative needs of that facility. So I think that should be an abundantly, you know, clear divide between what is a responsibility for running a school and the academic success of the children in the school versus whatever this is. You know, I've said, and I'm on the record, I hope that the fundraising is a whopping success. I want it to be a success, because the more successful the fundraising is, the less the taxpayers are burdened with this decision. So I'm hugely in favor of a wildly successful fundraising effort. I just think it has to be above board. I think it has to be very clear. I think it has to be nonpartisan. I think it has to not happen sort of like under the table or behind the scenes, so that everybody is aware of who's involved, what they're doing, who's getting the money, how the money's being handled, where the money is going, and that there's sort of be that clear divide. I do think that there's still questions for me about what's happening to our reserve account. And I don't know if, I missed the first like seven minutes, so I apologize for Miss Burden. Is our 2018 reserve account permanently depleted? And then if it's permanently depleted, is the 2019 reserve account also permanently depleted? So...
No, I mean, yes and no. Our plans are that at year-end, we would dedicate funds to replace the funds, bringing it back up to the level that it normally is in the next year.
But year-end funds are normally dedicated to reducing the, or part of the beginning budget for the following year, are they not?
That's correct. But a good bit are also spent on other items at the end of the year that are detailed in the year-end report.
So like, so one-time items. So I'm happier to hear that, I mean, the one-time items could go for anything. So that, I mean, the reality is, and I want to be abundantly clear, that when you pay for something, you're not paying for something else. There isn't a magic bucket that you can take money from and pay for something else, and that's even one-time year-end monies. And so if we're taking one-time year-end monies this year and replenishing the fiscal '18 reserve account, there's other things we won't be able to do. And that's fine. This board made this decision. But I want clarity when we speak about what we're choosing to do. We're choosing to not do other things and pay for this. And that's why I think it's incumbent, to the greatest extent possible, while I appreciate the fundraising that's gone on in the community, I am, I'm going to tell you, I'm a little surprised that in six months, only $75,000 has been raised, especially when you're staring at the kind of price tag. Now, I do want to give Mr. Kern's shop, you know, a shout-out for, you know, I think they've done pretty remarkable things, trying to mitigate costs where possible. And that's responsible. That's part of our strategic plan, is resource stewardship. And so if we can continue down that path, and then, Dr. Brabrant, you take the lead on this, and say, you know, you as the chief executive of the school system lend support to fundraising for this. I think now you're, now we're starting to get to where we should be, where maybe we haven't been up until now, which is, there's an executive role for this. It's not at the building level. It's not at a partisan level. And that what we do is posted publicly and above board, so that the public is aware of it.
I have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Palchak. A quick go-back for Ms. McLaughlin, and I'm going to start polling the board.
Keys-Gamarra, now has a go-back.
And Ms. Keys-Gamarra, okay, quick go-back. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
First, I want to echo my colleagues' thanks, not only to the Committee for Justice High, Justice High School and all the work you've done, but also to the school staff and leadership at Gate House that have spent a lot of time supporting this effort and have really represented the best of who we are as Fairfax County in trying to support these efforts. So thank you. I am echoing many of my colleagues in saying that we do need to support fundraising. I think that the concept that a generalized letter of support for fundraising from the superintendent is an appropriate letter. I'm somewhat agnostic whether or not it would be broader than that from the school board and the superintendent, but I understand where you're at on that. On the deadline of September 30th, I do have some questions on how we have supported new schools opening up, and when we have integrated the fundraising efforts back into a new school's opening. Because what we're really talking about is effectively opening a new school. And I know that we provide a lot of support to those schools as they open their doors. So if somebody can answer that question, it would be helpful.
I don't know. Are we in a position to answer that right now, or we may have to get that information? Do you know, Dr. Locker, off the top of your head?
Well, the generic answer, and I'm looking at Bill Kern, is, in a new school, we typically pay for all those things as part of the process of the construction of the materials and equipment, et cetera. So we're not incurring additional costs on top of that. It's just part of opening a new school. Am I correct there, Bill?
But we do provide support as the new school gets their committees going, their PTAs, their boosters, and organizations like that. And so it would be helpful to understand. But that's not essential today. And I do appreciate the clarification on grants. I can tell you, as somebody who gave a lot of money away when I was with Verizon, we actually did receive grants from individual committee groups, organizations. And it's really, grant is a broad term of asking for, you know, specifics on how the fundraising request goes to a specific item. So, but I'm perfectly fine with changing that terminology as corporate outreach and corporate fundraising. I do have a question as far as the FY19 support and the concept that we are expecting the $10,000 from the gate receipts to go towards this effort. I really don't think we should be doing that. I mentioned that at the board table the last time we had this conversation. The Justice High School staff and the Justice High School community have a heavy lift already towards turf replacement cost. And so it would be my recommendation that we do not take the gate receipts of $10,000 in fiscal year '19 to support this effort. We supported the Justice High School name change. We supported the name Justice High School. And now we need to honor those decisions that we made and not expect the boosters to contribute $10,000 in fiscal year '19. So I would ask that my colleagues consider giving that $10,000 back or not accepting that $10,000, because they are going to not only have to have the turf, but the bigger issue is, over time, all these uniforms that we're paying for, which will be partially paid for by the fundraising, those groups are going to have to replace those uniforms in cycles that I would prefer to see shortened rather than elongated because of that. And then the last question is actually just more of a request that we, as a board, get an update from the community and the staff on the plans on how we're going to honor the three justice namesakes. Because I think, you know, all of the sports and band uniforms are really important. But from my perspective, the most important aspect, and the logo's important and the mascot's important, but if we are serious about honoring the name Justice High School, then we also need to make sure that that part of our efforts is robust.
Okay, thank you. I would see that piece as a next step, that there would be a report back. I don't think we need to vote on that. Yes, that we would assume that there will be an update on how we will honor the three people. So I don't see that as something we have to vote on. I mean, we, an expectation, as a next step. Ms. Palchak?
Thank you, yes. I also want to thank the school, the principals, staff, the committee members who've done all this work. I'm especially pleased to see that, I believe, our final estimate for the costs, and I think Ms. Schultz brought this up, are about half of what we were originally looking at. So I think that's the really big piece out of this that I'm most happy to see. I know many in the community had concerns over our original estimates. So I want to thank staff for going back and looking. And once the RFPs came in, seeing that our true costs are really much lower than we originally expected. So that's very good to see. I do also support the fundraising efforts, while I agree with some of my colleagues, including Ms. McLaughlin, that this is our decision and that we need to take responsibility for that decision. The fact that, you know, and I used to work in nonprofit fundraising, it is not easy. And the fact, especially when you're not providing a service with it, we are not giving, there are things people look to fund and things that are harder to fund. So $75,000, kudos to a committee of volunteers. My understanding is, they've been waiting for a while to have a letter of support to be able to continue the work. So I would support that letter, again, agnostic as to where it's coming from, but happy to have us do that. I also agree, there is a way to have, find someone who can help, at least with guidance and a plan of, for this type of fundraising, what is helpful. I'm happy to also give all the time I can and to help us, you know, create a plan. We've, all of us here have had to raise money for campaigns. It takes a lot of time and effort and many, many phone calls. So if we are moving in that route, and to give the committee, you know, support and maybe a year plan, I think, you know, of what's appropriate, what we think is a reasonable amount. Also happy to give my time to that. amount, also happy to give my time to that, to the committee. So I think we want this to be successful. If we're going to say the committee will continue to raise funds, let's help them be successful and let's do what it takes to do that. So from the letter to any support from us to do that. And then finally, yes, with the ticket sales, thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I also would support that not coming out of the school budget. As we know, some schools, and I know you mentioned Woods and Ms. McLaughlin have a much easier time raising some larger amounts and bringing in quite a bit from ticket sales. And I think it would be a detriment to take that away from a school who really does not see the same kind of, of income yearly. So I would support that and happy to move this out and away from both the principal's burden and central staff and to support them and move forward with the naming. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Moon, and then two quick go-backs, and I like to begin polling to see where we are. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be brief. When the school would have made a decision to rename the school to Justice, that decision was not contingent upon communities raising of any money. And my support for the name change certainly was not contingent upon communities raising certain amount. You know, in fact, I believe that there was an amendment proposed at the time to put some contingency which I did not support. I still believe that, you know, this name change decision that the board had taken its time to make over a period of long time. The board made because bold, as a collective, I believe that there was compelling interest. And in my mind, the interest was compelling enough to change the name of the school in existence for 60 years to another name. So I always believed that, if the board believed that there was such level of interest to change the name, board should pay for it. Citizens, residents of a county, need to pay for the name change. That was my stance, that is still my stance at this point. I appreciate the efforts being made by the community to raise the money, to ease the burden upon, upon the school system in funding the name change expenses. However, I don't believe that the fundraising efforts, the community, if they want to do it on an ongoing basis, that is fine, but as far as central administrators, you know, spending a lot of their time to work with the community to do it, or even the school board getting a report like this, having a discussion like this, need to stop at a certain point. September 30th may be too soon, but you suggested, you know, Ms. Evans, another six, you know, six months. And certainly, you know, if we can, we can, you know, draw line, maybe by the end of this calendar year, December 31st, is a reasonable guideline that, that as far as our central administration and school board is concerned, that's when we see that our formal efforts by the school system, community can continue to do whatever they want to end. And that $10,000 that, I completely agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders, that we shouldn't be expecting to take $10,000 away from the gate receipt, you know, for the purpose of, you know, spending money for the name change. So that's where my support is. And the letter, support letter going out from the superintendents, I support that. I would have preferred our chairman to join in the letter, but I mean, I'll go with the majority, but that's where I am on the, on the support letter.
Thank you. Quick go-backs for Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
So in my earlier remarks, when I was talking about what we're going to be doing if we're creating more inequity instead of helping the school, and I appreciate Ms. Corbett Sanders putting a fine point on it with the gate receipts. I mean, that's exactly what I was trying to talk about, is if, if the committee wants to bring in fundraising because they are enjoying the work and they want to be doing that, we should applaud it and appreciate it. But I would like to understand, Dr. Braybrand, who suggested the gate receipts? Because that speaks exactly to the point that I was making, which is we can't be doing that to Justice High School. So, I mean, and I'm not asking you to like, it's not about which staff, that's not at all. I'm trying to figure out, did the community say to you, hey, can we pull our gate receipts? Or was this something that staff was looking at ways? Because the reason I'm, and I'm going very macro here, at a very macro level, I'm just going to be one board member's voice that says, I don't want any suggestions coming that any funding that's coming from the justice community, and that includes gate receipts that our, that our athletics so desperately rely upon, and Justice Stewart's, I mean, sorry, listen to me, Justice slash Stewart's, gate receipts to date are already very different from a lot of our schools around the county. So I just don't, I worry when we talk about this board handing it over to you guys, I want to make sure we've all been crystal clear, there's no siphoning off money that the community brings to Justice High School through the normal channels that the schools are going to need.
So I'm perfectly comfortable, I mean, I'm listening, and I know you, you'll wrap up soon, I'm perfectly comfortable amending my recommendation to my letter of support, moving the date from September 30th to December 31st for transition, and returning the $10,000 back to Stewart in FY19. We can make those changes and that can be part of my recommendation.
Thank you. And then the other final point why I wanted the go-back is, you know, I appreciate the concerns about the school board reserve fund and the one-time carryover funds, but in the grand scheme of that dollar amount on a $3 billion budget, and again, as schools that we're trying to help support inequity that we already have with fundraising bases, I just, I, I think, Mr. Moon, you, you captured it well again. This board stands behind the decision and we own the financial responsibility in the end.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra, and then we're going to poll.
All right. Just really quickly, with respect to your recommendation, Dr. Braybrand, I would hope that that would include, you know, what structure we're talking about, whether we're talking about a professional fundraiser or something of that sort, or whether we're going to get that at a later date. Are you just saying we're cutting it off now and we're taking it and we'll let you know how it goes?
Well, I, I don't have in my recommendation the use of an outside professional fundraiser. That's something the board can make a decision about. I certainly can take the spirit of that question to see if I can make some community links or there's some folks. We have so many people who offer pro bono support in our Fairfax County community, even beyond the justice community, that we may be able to bring together, and I can work to try to facilitate some more of that. So that's where my mind went when you shared that comment about trying to be more proactive. We have our education foundation at FCPS where I meet with a lot of business folks, and I could be, I could probably do a better job to see if there's some folks there with expertise that can help accelerate the, the committee's work.
That, that would be very helpful because that has been a concern of mine and would be part of the reason I pushed back on some of the comments we've had today with respect to the amount that's been raised, considering that this is a high free and reduced lunch school, one of our highest poverty schools, and the community did not have that kind of support from FCPS. For them to have raised this amount in $75,000 in six months is significant, and I say that from a perspective of somebody that's had to raise money with probably less support. So I, I do want to say that I also support the decision, or what the suggestion with respect to ticket sales for the same reason. We already have an inequity with respect to how funds are going to this school, and I don't want to add to that problem. And with respect to whose signature is on there, I'm, I'm in support of your signature. I'm happy to put my signature on there, but just so you know that, whatever you need me to do, I'm there.
Okay, one very last, Ms. Evans, and then we need to move on.
And just quickly, I would say that I appreciate the comments about the gate receipts. I certainly agree. I actually thought we had made that decision at an, at an earlier date, but I guess we'll go back. It sounds like people are supportive of that. And I appreciate Dr. Braybrand saying that December 31st would be a more reasonable date or an acceptable date. I, I would think that rather than having it be a firm cutoff, that it would be reasonable to have us assess at, at a certain point, rather than, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that if we have a firm cutoff date, that, that might hamstring some of the efforts that our wonderful committee members are doing. So that would be my advocacy to have, have another conversation in perhaps early December and see, you know, have they done all they can and, you know, is now the time to, to end that? But, but I appreciate the, the extension to December 31st.
Okay. We need to take a poll. And what I'm hearing from everyone's discussion, the changes from the superintendent's plan would be not to ask for the $10,000 from gate receipts. In other words, whatever cost that was going to, it'd either be from the central funds or from whatever fundraising. So not asking the boosters or gate receipts to put in the $10,000. The superintendent will share the generic letter of support to come from the superintendent. And the suggested deadline for central support is December 31st. I'm hearing a consensus on that, but I think with the assumption that there is some discussion and update as to how we are doing. But I see that as the three changes in the superintendent's plan, otherwise moving forward with the various fundraising activities by this wonderful generous committee and that we all are very supportive of, and that these efforts moving forward as they have described are for fundraising only. And then let's take a look to see, and then there's two next steps that I also heard. All right, how many people can support this plan going forward as I just described? All right, that is a clear majority. Thank you very much. And then as next steps, the board would like an update on how we're going to honor the three individuals on which the name was chosen, honoring Justice Thurgood Marshall, Barbara Rose Johns, and Colonel Mendez, because we want to, we would like to hear how that's coming. And I think that that was it, and the superintendent obviously will share the letter. All right? So is that okay with everybody as next steps? Can I see a show of hands?
I, I thought that second one, to bring a board for fun, well, it doesn't have to be a plan, it could be to report.
An update. Superintendent will bring to the board an update. Yeah. Yeah, an update, okay. An update sometime in the fall so that we, so that we know how it's going.
Yeah, prior, that's.
Prior, okay. All right. So how many people can support that? All right, I believe that we are done. Thank you all very much. And again, thank you to the community volunteers who have worked so hard, and good luck to Justice High School. We're looking forward to a celebration in the renaming, and thank you to my colleagues. All right, two-minute break and we will go on. We're only 15 minutes behind. Great.